We have the wrong time on agenda?
Yeah, I see that.
Do we need to correct it?
That's a peaceful glitch, that's whatever. You guys all know it's seven, sorry.
Okay. Call this meeting order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda, any additions?
I'm going to adopt the agenda as presented.
I thought you had an addition.
No.
It's already long enough.
Question.
Moved by Counselor Cutler to accept the agenda as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Minutes of August 12th, 2024. Any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to adopt them as presented.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the regular meeting minutes of August 12th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. I open the public hearing for bylaw 1789. Can you remind us of that, Abe, please?
Sure. So, council approved first reading of this bylaw at the August 12th meeting. And this is a rezoning bylaw to rezone public land, land that's zoned as public to single detached residential. And so, in accordance with legislation, we advertised, the town advertised, that there would be a public hearing for this land use bylaw redesignation. And did not receive any comment or concerns from members of the public.
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to comment on bylaw 1789? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Delegations, Clarson Minor Hockey Association. Abe?
Yeah, so we have a couple of members of the Minor Hockey Association that would like to talk to council tonight about the arena user fees.
Okay. Come on up, ladies.
Not very good at public speaking, I'm sorry.
Push that button, turn the red light on. There you go.
Okay.
Perfect. Otherwise, they can't pick you up among the hundreds of people that are watching you.
Great, no pressure.
So, for all of you that don't know me, I'm Jody Gibson. I'm Clarson Minor Hockey's president, as well as Caitlin here, she's a director and our ice scheduler for minor hockey here. Just wanted to look at reconsidering our 20% increase over the two years for the ice fees. We understand that the rate increase is probably required when originally voted for a year ago. 10% increase for the first year to bring the rates closer to surrounding arena rates. However, 20% increase in the two years was extremely steep comparing to surrounding arena rates and now considering we have the NJHL team bringing in more revenue for the arena. We'd like the council to reconsider the additional 10% increase this year. Minor hockey, last year we carded five teams and used approximately 373 hours at a rate of $78 plus GST, so bringing it to $81.90, which is approximately $30,548 in ice fees. We will be carting the same number of teams this year again, assuming we use the same hours with 10% increase. Our ice fees approximately will increase 3,000 again, so 6,000 over the last two years, which is a big hit on our Minor Hockey Association. If we carted all six teams that we're supposed to, it'd be closer to 9,000 within two years. We just happen to not be carting as many teams. It's had a huge impact on our budget for ice fees. When the increase took place, Denise did send out comparative arena rates, lowest to highest, I have them listed here. Vulcan was $60 an hour. Bo Island, 70. Crowsnest, 72. Pincher Creek, 75. Cardston, 75. McGrath, 80. Tabor, 80, 75. Fort McLeod, 85. Nanton, 89. Voxhall, 90. Picture Butte, 96, 52. Moore City Centers, High River, 90. Block Diamond, 95. Brooks, 100. Oaktoke's, 109, 50.
I'd like to just point out that, like, Nanton and Picture Butte, was it? We have one arena guy working in the arena at the time, they have two, so that kind of goes into consideration with their rates, that they have two guys working there.
Whereas, we only have one, and so, like, our refs move our, which is totally fine, they've all accepted it, move our goals and stuff instead of the arena guys, because there's usually one guy moving and one guy running Zamboni. But they're the most close to us, besides Vulcan, like I said, Vulcan's really low at As you can see, we are certainly not the lowest, we are also not the highest. I'd like the council to please consider our request to reduce the additional 10% increase. As most nonprofits know, the casino is a huge help to cover the arena costs. The amount we get is approximately 30,000. This has not changed in many years, and as you can see, it helps cover the cost of ice for about a year only. We do multiple fundraisers throughout the year and would like to keep our fees low for children wanting to participate in minor hockey. So again, like I said, we would like to, the board, to consider the reduction in the 10% increase. Any questions?
Okay. Questions, concerns? We're good? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm nervous.
No, it's good.
Okay. That's okay. Good.
So, just for information, we may have emailed this to you, but council doesn't make decisions during the delegation, but we'll discuss the request at a future meeting.
Okay. Perfect. And we're good to go now?
Yep.
I must have more to say. No. You did good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Okay. Action item. Bylaws 180. Bylaw 1788. Abe?
Yeah, so, bylaw 1788 is on the agenda for second and third readings tonight. If you recall, council, the purpose of the bylaw amendment was to harmonize the administrative fees between the unsightly premises bylaw and our traffic and highway bylaw. And so, we have, we are having a couple additions here to harmonize those rates. Previously, the administrative fee, when we're, when administration is processing any contraventions of the bylaw was $25, and we're proposing to bring it up to $40 for the first offense and to have $120 for the second offense, which is a provision that is in the traffic and highway bylaw, but not in the unsightly premises and property standards bylaw. The purpose of putting that in there is to discourage repeat offenders. And so, there was a question at the last council meeting during first reading about whether or not that resets for a given property, and yes, it does. In every new season, it does reset. And so, if there was a residence that received a couple notices this winter, for example, by the time next winter rolled around, it would reset and go back to a first offense and all those notices again.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for second reading, please? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1788, the unsightly premises and property standards bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion for third reading, please? Counselor Kettles, question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1788, the unsightly premises and property standards bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. 1B, bylaw 1789, land use bylaw number 1525 amendment. Abe?
So, we did just, council did just hold a public hearing for this land use redesignation. And there were no comments from the public. The specific property in question here being rezoned from public to residential, single detached residential, is portions of lots 17 to 19, block 17, plan 147. And this is on the agenda for second and third readings.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for second reading, please? Counselor Cutler, question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give bylaw number 1789, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Approved.
I'm, I'll move to give it a third reading.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to give bylaw number 1789, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. 1C, bylaw 1790 cemetery. Abe?
So, bylaw 1790 is also on the agenda for second and third readings. The main purpose of the amendments to the bylaw at this time are to adjust the fee schedule to better cover operational and capital costs of the, operational costs of the maintenance of the cemetery, to have user, user fees pay for that more than taxation, have a better portion of that. And so, we are proposing a fee structure change. We did discuss that last time, generally across the board. We're looking at 50% increases in fees, just pulling it up here, for cemetery services. And some clarification items in the amendment as well. For example, it previously was an offense to have an animal off-leash in the park. However, it's actually been listed under, specifically under offenses now. Previously, it was kind of lost in the bylaw jargon, and so, it's clear to track that as Additional, a couple operational things, additional 10.11, additional memorial markers may be installed on plots to identify the interment of cremated remains provided the additional plaques or markers are incorporated on the existing monument. What we're finding, that this previously wasn't the case, that we required this in the bylaw, what we're finding is as people put more markers on the grave, if it's not on the monument, it extends into the grass area, it actually makes it more difficult, quite a bit more difficult to maintain for some, some gravesides that have multiple monuments. So, now we're asking people to keep it contained within the existing structure. And we're not proposing that these, this fee structure takes effect until 2025, so that gives people notice, a time to prepare for those fee changes.
Any questions, concerns? Could I have a motion for second reading, please? Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1790, the cemetery bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Could I have a motion for third reading? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1790, the cemetery bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Moving on, provincial government correspondence. Number one, Honorable Rick McGyver, Minister of Municipal Affairs.
So, we normally receive this notice about this time every year, the fire services training program grant, just the minister usually informs, pardon me, municipalities that the fund is available. We have tapped into it several times. The MD applies on our behalf, does it regionally, and so, they may, may connect with council at one point for a letter of support, depending on what training they have planned. Off the top of my head, I don't know if there is anything planned, but that's coordinated with the fire chiefs in the region and then, and executed by the MD.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll take that for information. Other government correspondence, Alberta Municipalities Jasper Fire Community Fund. Abe?
So, Alberta Municipalities is just letting councils know that there is a fund out there called the Jasper Community Team Society. They are accepting donations for victims of the Jasper Fire wildfires, and specifically, the funding supports residents who have been denied emergency relief funds and those without rental and tenant insurance. We're, Municipalities is accepting donations until September 20th, and they will match whatever they generate up to $15,000. So, there's a link button on the notice where you can donate.
Take that for information. Thank you. Number two, Alberta Municipalities Convention, prepared to vote for resolutions. Abe?
Correspondence from Alberta Municipalities on the upcoming fall convention. This is really where the rubber hits the road for that group who represent municipalities throughout the province every year at a convention. Resolutions are brought forward by participating municipalities, and if the motions are approved, that gives Alberta Municipalities their direction to advocate for the collective throughout the year. And so, they've shared the 2024 resolutions book with all councils and invited them to discuss, discuss the resolutions, see how they resonate in the community and, and with the council particularly, and discuss how they'd like to vote on particular resolutions. 27 resolutions in this book.
Any questions, concerns, discussion?
Few of the, few of the items here, establishing independent office of integrity, so there's a motion to do that. Essentially, that's some kind of provincial office to oversee and help municipalities administer the code of conduct. In the resolution, they're bringing up that there is a bit of a conflict in that, with the codes of conduct, in that it's counselors, for lack of a better term, policing one another. And so, they're, they're questioning, arguably, that's puts counselors in a bad position. Additionally, if council decides to have an investigation, it's the CAO and administration who have to kind of hire someone and oversee that. The suggestion here is that this, this office of integrity would oversee that whole process and create a less biased process, more third-party outside organization process to help councils, educate councils on that. So, there's some governance pieces, there's a lot of, last year, there was several FCSS, social service-related pieces, there's more in there again this year. There's resolutions about regional economic development associations and having consistent continued funding for them. Reviews of the provincial education property tax to help municipalities retain more of the education property tax that they collect. Housing, emergency response, housing association, better funding for housing associations.
Any comments? Take it for information. Thank you. Number three, celebrating, Counselor Gordon Wilsonholm. Abe?
Yes, Counselor from Fort McLeod, Counselor Wilsonholm, they are celebrating 20 years as a, in municipal council, Saturday, October 12th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the GR Davis Administration Building. And so, this is an invitation for council to attend that event.
Anyone want to attend? I'll attend.
I'll go closer to the seat.
Okay. Let me know.
I have witnesses here.
Yep. 20 years.
Wow. You're going away halfway through. Oh, you got great.
Just let Corinne know, Counselor Cutler, if you can go. Local correspondence, National Police Federation, new polling results. Abe?
So, I guess we, it feels like we get, or council gets correspondence from the National Police Federation probably a few times a year. They're just bringing attention to the fact that Bill 11 has been passed, which establishes new independent police agency service in Alberta. They've done some more polling and are sharing those results, trying to advocate for the RCMP and the retention of that. And so, they've shared the results of those polling and, yeah.
Questions, discussion? Thank you. Take it for information. Number two, inclusion foothills. Abe?
Yeah, so, this is from Inclusion Foothills, and they are promoting October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. And they celebrate the businesses in the foothills who are providing employment opportunities for people with pan disabilities. And so, they're asking for municipalities' help to dedicate or declare, rather, October 2024 as the Disability Employment Awareness Month. Council's, council's practice is to not proclaim any special initiatives or weeks or days or events and to remain neutral.
Thank you. Number three, Rowan House Society. Abe?
So, very similar correspondence from the Rowan House Society, promoting November as Family Violence Prevention Month and looking for a declaration from the municipality as well, drawing some attention to domestic violence statistics in the area and in the province, and discussing some of the supports that they have available.
Questions, concerns? Take it for information. Number four, Terry Fox Run. Abe?
Yeah, the annual Terry Fox Run is coming up on September 15th at 2:00 PM at the Clarson Fire Hall, and they are inviting a member of council, representative of council, to say a few words for the run.
I replied, I'll be there. I encourage any other counselors that can come, to come. Any questions, concerns? Number five, Clarson Thunder Alumni Association Committee. Abe?
So, this is a request from the Alumni Association, who are putting on a charity hockey tournament. This will be the second one they've done. I don't think they did one this year, but they did one in 2023, I believe, right?
Every two years.
Every two years, thank you. And so, that tournament runs from the 28th to the 30th, that'll be in 2025. All the money raised goes to groups within the community. I believe a couple of years ago, it was 31,000 that they raised, and they pushed that back into community groups. So, the three-day tournament's made up of senior Thunder alumni players, they're hoping to have eight to 10 teams with 15 skaters. And, and so, the last time they held the tournament, council approved waiving the arena fees and the, the ice fees, rather, and the mezzanine fees, ice fees for up to 20 hours of play is what the approval was last, last time it ran, which that cost, if they don't bear that cost, they'll have more money to push back into the community from their fundraising
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion to approve that, please? Counselor Ross, all in favor? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to donate up to 20 hours of ice time, as well as the use of the mezzanine, to the Clarson Thunder Alumni Committee from March 28th to 30th, 2025, for a fundraising hockey tournament at the Clarson Arena.
All in favor? Approved. Number six, Clarson Chamber of Commerce. Abe?
Yeah, so, the Chamber of Commerce Business Awards, they are looking for a member of council to help judge the business awards. The judging happens on Wednesday, October 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Who'd like to volunteer?
I can volunteer for that.
Perfect. Request for decision. Letter of, letter of support for Western Fine Meats. Abe?
Yeah, Western Fine Meats located at 4264 Third East Street in, in town, has been approved for an expansion of their facilities, which is a state-of-the-art chicken processing facility. They have submitted a request to the Economic Development Department and council for a letter of support for the Supply Management Processing Investment Fund, that is a federal, federal program. So, they're looking towards creating 20 new jobs with this expansion and creating employment opportunities for people in the town, and then, looking to set a new standard for food processing. So, they are looking for a letter of support from council to submit with their application to Supply Management Investment Fund.
Any questions, concerns, counselor?
Only concern I've got is the, other than processing chickens and a square for a new addition, we don't have any real information on community impact, waste management, odor impacts, and so on and so forth, which would be concerning. I know if you go look at the history in Calgary of Lilydale, there were significant impacts. So, I, I would be more than concerned about sending a letter off without some of those questions answered. questions answered.
Could we get clarification on that before we send a letter of support?
Sure. We can definitely get some clarification for you on that.
Councillor Cutler?
Did they come to us to approve the expansion? Or is that done through, that didn't come to the council, right?
I believe that went to MPC, did it? Yes.
And were those questions answered in MPC? If there was, but they got approval for the expansion without any of that information?
For basic plans of floor...
Oh, okay. Well, I started, they got approval for expansion, there must have been some kind of information and dialogue around the impact they would have had before they got the approval for the expansion.
To my recollection, I don't remember anything about processing birds.
While it was processing, but they didn't clarify what it was, or how many, or what their plans were.
Well, I agree. We need those answers, then.
We'll reach out to them and get council more information.
Thank you.
Okay. Letter of support, Social Centre. Abe?
So the Social Centre is looking to apply for the New Horizons for Seniors Program, and they are looking to do some upgrades to their kitchen facilities and to do some general light renovations, painting, et cetera, in the building. So new stove, renovations to accommodate the new stove, painting, new sink and faucet, et cetera. So they estimate the total project to be worth $21,000, almost $22,000. And again, they are looking for a letter of support to apply for the New Horizons for Seniors Program, which covers eligible projects up to $25,000.
Questions? Concerns? Discussion? Could I have a motion to approve us sending a letter of support to the Social Centre, please? Councillor Cutler? Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to provide a letter of support to the seniors' social centre for their grant application to the New Horizons for Seniors Program.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, Fire Engine Update. Abe?
So just an ETA on the new fire engine. Should be completed and is getting tested this week. They do all sorts of pressure pumping tests and what have you on those engines. The fire chief is expected to go out and, standard process, the chief actually gives a final inspection on site last week of September. So Fort Gary, the company that is fabricating the fire engine, would like to showcase it at the upcoming Southern Alberta Fire Training Conference, and so that's held in Lethbridge from October 17th to 19th. And so the fire chief thought that's a great opportunity to showcase the fire department, the town, and the engine, and so he's planning to do that. And so sometime after that, there will be an actual pushing-in ceremony, and council has requested to promote the event and have a public event, so we'll coordinate something, and we'll probably have yet another info brief on a future council agenda, just kind of detailing what that event, just giving the details on that event. If there's any specific requests for that pushing-in ceremony, we can take that from you, otherwise we'll plan a public engagement for that.
Perfect. Good news. Number two, Communications and Recreational Facilities Survey. Abe?
Yeah, so this is just a report for council and the community. As everybody knows, we did some surveys. We had some public participation plans directed towards us administratively from council to seek public feedback on communications, the level of engagement in the community, as well as, there were two separate issues that kind of came together at once, funding for towns' recreational and cultural facilities, maintaining those buildings and replacing them. And so we actually put those two surveys together and promoted them at the same time, kind of as one survey. And so a bit of information for council, we received 294 responses. We made, we provided the option for people to fill them out manually and electronically. Overwhelmingly, the response was from electronic. We received five manual responses, and so we inputted, administratively, we inputted those into the system. Some information on the communications survey, 40% of respondents felt informed of local government issues, 30% were neutral, and 29% did not feel informed. Residents prefer Facebook, the town website, town news, and the local press to access town information, and residents would like to know more about council decisions and the strategic plan, financial information, so budget, taxation, and financial reports, and economic development and town operations and utilities. Those were the top, those were the top subject matter that residents wanted to hear more about. The Recreation and Culture Facilities Survey found that 40% of respondents agreed that the town should increase funding for facilities, 25% were neutral, and approximately 34% disagreed. About 75 of respondents supported some level of tax increases to fund facility repair and maintenance, and 25% did not want any tax increases. Mackin Hall and the golf course were the two facilities that had the least support to continue funding. There were also some short-answer questions on there regarding what the town could do to improve communications, and we also sought feedback from residents on other ways to manage recreation and culture facilities, their revenue sources, for example. Those have to be coded still, so administratively, we'll put them into categories and summarize those answers. The plan was always to use this information to advise, A, the communication strategy that administration is working on, and B, a potential funding source for recreation and culture facilities. And so we plan to bring this information back to council at future planning meetings in the fall, this fall, to help guide some of the decision-making on these matters. Any questions from council? Or comments?
Question?
It's for everyone who responded.
Thanks, Abe. We'll take that for information. Council Committee Report. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, councillor Meister.
Anything you want to add? Thank you. Council Resolution Status. Abe?
Yeah, any questions from council on any of the past resolutions?
Perfect. Thank you. Information Items. Update from Lieutenant Governor of Alberta. Abe?
Yeah, I haven't reviewed that item yet, so, sorry.
Okay. Number two, FCM Voice. Abe? Nothing there. Yeah. Information. Rural Development Network. You're invited. Abe?
Yeah, this is RDN's. They've got an AGM on the 16th of September, and so Rural Development Network is the group that has helped council out with the housing needs assessment and the social needs assessment. They also helped us out with the Enabling House Choice Study. So we've done a few projects with them. So that's, sorry, it looks like it's the 16th AGM, which is on September 18th, and that's at 10 o'clock, so...
Anyone want to attend? Okay.
You can do it virtually as well.
Virtually, yeah. Okay. CAO Report. It was on my sheet, but it's not on the electronic agenda. Okay. That's good.
That'll be on, so it's on the template, and when I printed it off for you on Friday, it would have not, since been removed.
Yeah.
Because there are probably a couple of things that have been removed off of that, actually.
Yeah.
I'll have to remember to print you the updated version on Monday.
Perfect. Okay. Can I have a motion to go in camera, please?
We need a motion to adopt the information items.
All. Motion to adopt the information items. Councillor Meister. Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Councillor Cutler, motions to go in camera. Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to go in camera at 7:43 p.m. for the following items. Number one, FOIP Section 16, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party. Number two, FOIP Section 19, confidential evaluations. Number three, FOIP Section 24, advice from officials, and number four, Section 24, advice from officials.
All in favor? Approved. We are now in camera. Camera off, please. Could I have a motion to come out of in camera, please? Out of in ca... Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to come out of in camera at 8:34 p.m.
Perfect. Motion for a recommendation for the community hall renovations. Questions? Concerns? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to accept the proposal from Nitro Construction for the community centre renovation project in the amount of $405,000 plus GST.
All in favor? Approved. A motion on Pine Place Lots. Could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to direct administration to figure out fair market appraisal for the prices of the Pine Place Lots.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to direct administration to obtain a market appraisal for the Pine Place Lots.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Meister. Question?
Moved by councillor Meister that this meeting adjourned at 8:36 p.m.
All in favor? Camera off, please.